Mr. Harden?
Here.
And Mr. Wright?
Here.
So everybody's present.
Thank you very much.
Go to the quorum.
And we'll, first item is looking for approval, dispensing with the reading of the minutes from August 10th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so the minutes from August 10th stand approved. We are not going to address any board vacancies or appointments because, I don't know if we have any information on that today, but we have plenty of other things going on. So I don't think we actually have any deadlines or any items, but we'll look more closely at that at our next meeting. We do have several additions to tonight's agenda. Four items. First of all, to be added to our committee referral agenda. Item number 230820, which is a request to consider updates on West Oxmoord Lane widening, coming to us from Wyatt-Pew and Berkeley Squires, and this one would be referred to Finance Committee. We have item number 240820, request to make changes to the city's resolution regarding the city contributions to retiree insurance and add a monthly stipend for both single and family retiree insurance in order to help the city keep their preferred rate. This coming to us from Mayor McBreyer, and will also go to our Finance Committee. And also to committee referral, we have a request for citywide neighborhood watch program. And I believe we're going to refer this one to Public Safety.
Correct.
Okay. And last, and that's going to be 260820, if I didn't say that. Skipped over, 250820, which is going to go to other new business. It's going to be a resolution to auth, and this is for tonight. Resolution authorized the mayor to execute a contract with Jefferson County for infrastructure projects along Greensprings Highway. Alright, so I think those are the four items I have. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended by Mr. Harden, second by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey, President Wright, can I ask you real quick, on the neighborhood watch program, the public safety, is that, who did that come from? Mr. Wolverton?
Mr. Wolverton, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't add that.
Okay, and then the request authorized the mayor to execute contract on the new business was Counselor Smith and Andrus?
Correct.
And you kept that one as 2508 in the neighborhood watch?
I did.
2608, okay.
Just want to keep you on your toes.
Thank you.
I'll try to, I'll try to keep them out of order to keep us organized, or disorganized. Alright, so we have the agenda, I'm trying to remember, did we have a vote?
Yes, sir.
We did, okay. Lost track, so we had a...
It was unanimous, eleven is the year.
Thank you. So the agenda as amended is approved by the council. And with that, I'm actually going to request, a request for an executive session tonight to deal with a real estate matter. And Mr. Kendrick, I think you have something to announce on that.
Yes, sir. The discussions would have to be limited to real estate matters, the public discussion which may affect the value.
Affect the value? Okay. Alright, so with that, ladies and gentlemen, we, you know, hesitate to say how long, but I certainly hope it will be 15 minutes or less. And so with that, we will go ahead and convene for executive session. Thank you.
You have to have a vote. You have to have a vote.
I'm sorry.
I moved.
I'll take a vote on that.
Executive session.
Can't be without...
Andrus first?
Without approval. Alright, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for Ms. Andrus.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Thames. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so we will go ahead and do the executive session. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
Second.
By Mr. Waltney, and a second by Mr. McCluskey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're back on our agenda, and it's like next up is our consent agenda. We actually don't have any items on the consent agenda, so we're going to go straight into our old business agenda. First item is 070820, which is a public hearing set for September 14th at 6:00 PM for consideration of, to rezone property at 3019 Firefighter Lane from R5 to attached dwelling to R4. Attached dwelling? Okay. I don't know, but it's going to be R5 to R4. This coming to, for us from Amy Mae Cooley, to permit the development of two separate single-family houses. And again, this will be carried over for public hearing until September 14th. Next item is 080820, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of declaring a house at 2541 Central Avenue, a public nuisance. This item is coming to us from Mr. Pew. And, Mr. Pew, it's, it's my understanding that this has already been addressed. I will still have to open the public hearing, but I'm going to let you do that. Tell me the latest.
Yes, sir. The nuisance has been abated. There's, there's no more danger. The lot has been cleaned up and stabilized. I recommend dropping the item if that's appropriate.
Alright, we still have a public hearing tonight, and there may be a question or two about that. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
He debauched.
Assuming no one's here to speak in favor against this item since it has been addressed, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we have a motion to drop from Mr. McCluskey, a second from Ms. Andrus. I want, may I add one thing? Is there anything to do about, I don't know, the cost for all this? Mike, I don't know how much it is, or...
We need the property to be...
Okay, we do, so...
We just had, we just ran an ad that, we ran in Birmingham News before that, so I don't know if we can get that cost back tonight.
How much is that cost?
It was a couple of $300. I don't have the exact figure with me.
Okay.
We tried to stop it after the, but it ran the Sunday before the committee meeting where we found out that he had already demoted, that the person had already demoted.
Alright. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and drop it, disregarding the advertising costs, seeing no one really jumping up and down about it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that item will be dropped, and we will just bear the advertising cost. 130720, which is a request for the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cardiac Solutions to supply automatic electronic defibrillators in police vehicles and school buildings. This coming to us from Mayor McBreyer, and this was carried over from our August 3rd meeting. And I believe with this item, we not, we need to also amend our budget with regard to consideration of this. And Melody, can you, can you refresh us on how much?
I believe the, Bishop Gergit has a contract. It was about $147,000, is that correct?
One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven.
I have the report.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Jones. And so, so we're looking at amending the budget as well as an agreement for the purchase of these defibrillators, and we'll begin, first of all, with the report from Finance. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee, Finance Committee met on August 17th and recommended four to zero approval of this item, and as you mentioned, we would be amending capital budget, carryover fund balance, 12-15-589310, which is the fire medical capital, and approximate expenses, $127,000.
Just what I was looking for. Thank you, sir. So we have a favorable vote out of Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that item stands approved, and that will be our first resolution tonight, 20-111.
Yes, sir.
Next item is 020820, request to surplus the following vehicles. A 1996 Lincoln Town Car, a 2000 Chevy Tahoe, and to surplus some outdated firearms, as well as a 2008 International 7300 4x2, which is apparently a vehicle. A John Deere 510C, a back, a 4x4 Backhoe, a 2010 Crown Vic, a 2004 Dodge Durango. This all coming to us from Captain Ben Sutton with our Police Department, and Gordon James with our Fleet Maintenance Department. And I will add to everyone, this is a, is a, an amended list of adding a few items that was, some of these items were not on our initial notice, but just wanted to point that out to everyone. So with that, I'll begin with the report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of this item, and that does include the additions by Mr. James.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. And this will require a first reading, is, Mr. Kendrick, so if you can give us a first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare certain personal property and equipment a surplus. So everybody establish and declare the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purpose, and therefore declared surplus property. 1996 Lincoln Town Car, the 2000 Chevy Tahoe, outdated firearms, 2008 International 7300 4x4, 4x2, excuse me, the John Deere 510C, Backhoe, 2010 Crown Vic, and a 2004 Dodge Durango 4x4. That the mayor and the city clerk be unauthorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Alright, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. McCluskey, second by Mr. Wyatt, and roll call vote. Melody?
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So that is unanimous consent, and now I'll entertain a motion for approval by Mr. Waltney, and a second by Mrs. Smith. And Melody, another roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So that, surplusing those items is approved. Ordinance 2779. Next item is 030820, request for consideration of a drainage study for Kennelworth Drive. This item coming to us from Philip Mum and Greg Cobb with our BEZ Department, and we'll begin with another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation, pending a meeting with Shoal Engineering. And I believe Mr. Cobb has a report for us tonight.
Okay.
So he was going to...
Update.
Bring it to us. This will be coming out of the Engineering Services line item 01-12-520200, is the line item. This will be coming out.
Alright, Mr. Cobb?
We do have the money in that, in that particular line item to cover this, this contract. I don't know if Mr. Kendrick had a chance to review it. I sent it to him kind of late today because I thought I'd done it. Oh, well, I thought I had done it back in March, but I had, got worried about it, so I sent it to him late today, so I'm sure he hadn't had time to review it. But if you do approve the contract, the next move, I've got, got lined up, I've got Spire to come out and dig up the utilities so we can get elevations on the gas line and the water line to make sure that we can get a pipe through there that'll fit. Because if the water line's, say, 18 inches deep, that's too shallow for us to go on top, and it might be too deep for us to go under, just depending on where they are, because you've got to figure the amount of fall you've got to the creek. So that's our, you can approve the contract tonight, pending or not, whatever you, whatever you wish, but I will have utilities located before we actually turn Walter Shoal loose on it. Because they need to know where those pipes are, too, for their design.
Okay. Here. Alright, so that's, that's coming to us with a favorable vote out of Finance.
Well, I would say, Mr. President, the, it really came back, we're just sending it to the full council, so I would, I would make a motion, if you recognize me, to, to approve the, up to $17,000 out of the Engineering Services line item, which we do have in the budget.
Yes, sir.
You know, pending, what was pending the...
Pending the location of the utilities.
The location of the utilities.
Make sure it actually fits.
Yeah.
We don't spend any money on design until we know it.
You said $17,000?
It's a seven, Mike's got it, it's a...
$800.
You said not to exceed $17,000.
Not to exceed $17,000.
Alright, so up to $17,000, we have a motion from Mr. Jones, and a second from Mr. McCluskey. Hold it a second before we vote. Mr. Wyatt?
Yeah, is that also pending Mr. Kendrick's review?
Yes, sir.
Of the contract?
It is.
Alright, so we're going to have that motion amending, amended to include Mr. Kendrick's review. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's going to stand approved as resolution 20-113.
I think it's 112. The other one was ordinance.
Oh.
Mr. Wright, if I can maybe say one more thing to make sure that everybody understands this. This is for the study, okay? It doesn't include the final plans if, if we elect to move forward. There'll still have to be some drawings made.
I understand, this is just paying for the study.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, 050820, request for consideration of a resolution to adopt transportation plan pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act. This item coming to us from Berkeley Squires, Robert Gergit, our Finance Director and Assistant City Clerk, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk and Assistant Finance Director. And we'll begin with a report from Finance on this item. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval pending the paving plan. This is budgeted in the FY 2021 Budget 0501-410800, which is the Rebuild Alabama Gas Tax Fund.
Great, thank you, sir. So it's coming to us from favorable vote out of Finance. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that will stand approved, and that is 20, resolution 20-113. Alright, next item, 060820, request for consideration to add a street light at Pointtiana and Hermosa. This coming to us from Jennifer Andrus. And with this item, we'll begin with a report from Public Safety. Mr. McCluskey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend the approval. Motion was made by Counselor Andrus and seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
Alright, it's coming to us for favorable vote from Public Safety. I believe this is not, resolution's not needed for this, but we'll go ahead and take a vote on it.
Well, and I think there's also a report from Finance as well, because...
Oh, is there a report from Finance?
Well, yeah. Unfortunately, within Finance...
Unfortunately, you do have to pay for it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I say unfortunately, but I mean, we, we carried it over because we didn't have the figures yet, because it was going to be a decorative light.
That's not on my sheet here.
So we're waiting, yeah, we're waiting on the recommendation from, from Board Five.
Alright.
Is this, this is the one, right?
Yeah, it is. It is.
Particularly at the entry, because it's at the entryway, I think it's a board for a decorative light. I mean, it's right, you come in from Birmingham. Have you heard from Randy today? I just texted him.
I have not gotten the figure back. That's what we're waiting on.
They're going to have to put the utilities underground for it.
Okay, so we don't have a figure yet?
But the next committee meeting is right before council, so you can go to council and committee on the 14th. Because we're having council meetings, committees before the next council meeting.
Alright.
Immediately before.
Alright.
The Labor Day.
Alright. And this, and this is a, a Public Safety and Finance Committee item. Okay.
Correct.
So without objection, we will carry this over to our meeting on September 14th.
Good.
Okay?
And I will have those figures by then.
Alright, great. Thank you, sir. Alright, that's going to get us to our committee referral agenda, which has been amended. I want to add one other clarification with regard to the amendments to our committee referral agenda. I've already read those that have been added to it, but also with respect to 110820, we're going to just amend a little bit of the language there to state, the new 110820 will be a request for consideration for additional street lighting and to address traffic concerns on Forest Brook. This is coming to us from Counselor Wolverton and Randy Hamley with our Police Department. And this one will be referred to the state of their Public Safety and Finance Committees. So I just wanted to point that out. We have added a little language to that, along with the others we have added.
Are you saying it's about both Finance and Public Safety?
Yes. Yes, Mr. McCluskey?
If I, if I may ask a question to Mr. Wolverton, whose item this is, are you encompassing all of Forest Brook with this? Are you talking about Forest Brook Drive? I'm just trying to get, because Randy Hamley's going to have to do s...
Yeah, so I talked to Randy already about it. For down on the Forest Brook Drive and Delris.
Okay. Alright, I just, I just want to make sure, okay.
I have some specific experience that I've made in meetings.
Okay. Can we, can we put that language?
Forest Brook Drive.
And Delris.
And Delris. Alright, so we'll add that additional amend, amendment to the already amended 110820?
Sorry, I just...
Being, oh, I'm playing with you.
I believe it has to be...
To be already added to our already amended committee referral agenda. And with all of that, I will entertain a motion to approve that by Mrs. Smith, and a second by Mr. Higginbotham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, our quadruple amended committee referral agenda is approved. That will get us to other new business. Alright, here we go. 130820, request for consideration of potential partial refunding of the 2012 and 2016 bond warrants as authorized by resolution number 20-50, adopted March 30, 2020. This is coming to us from Yours Truly and Mayor McBreyer. And this does have to do with our 2012, 2016 warrants and the possible refunding of a portion of those general obligation warrants to provide the city with frankly, a very substantial savings on the bonds based on historical low interest rates we have right now. Stifel, the company, has recently informed the city that the bond market has improved at the present time such that a refunding may provide the city with an estimated $5 million in present value savings. Stifel has set up some rating calls with the rating agencies for September in order to permit the city to continue to evaluate the cost-saving feasibility of considering the refunding of the bond mark, if the bond market continues to be favorable to the refunding. Stifel will continue to monitor the market for us and will work to have the necessary documents ready for consideration when a favorable present value savings is available to the city for any of the 2012 or 2016 warrants. All depending on how the bond, bond market performs in the, in the next several weeks. This matter will be carried over on the agenda for future consideration and possible action at the September 14th meeting, depending on the bond market and the advice of Stifel after the rating calls. So all that is about a potential opportunity to save a lot of money for our city on some very favorable bond rates that are out there right now. And we are looking at them closely, and are going to try to be in a position to act quickly if needed. Okay? So without objection, we're going to carry that over for this meeting for tonight. That's going to get us to our next item, which is going to be 140820, which is a request for consideration to declare 18th Street Right-A-Way property surplus and authorize the mayor to execute a de-transfering of the property. This is coming to us from your council president as well, and this will require a first reading, I believe. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to dispose of surplus municipal property. Everybody establish and declare that the following described real estate at the City of Homewood, where only the public has municipal properties, therefore declared surplus. It describes property, which is a right-of-way adjacent to 18th Street. Two, that the mayor be is authorized and directed to dispose of properties described in section nine above, out of sale to MAM Investments LLC, now then a lot of early companies pursuant to the development agreement paid recently since 2018, previously entered by the City and MAM Investments, another agreement that had consideration of the city.
Alright, thank you, sir. So as I understand, this is essentially property that was donated to the city with regard to the projects in the building going on out there, and this is excess property that now exists and under our contract to be sold to the developer. Is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. But it's conditioned upon specifically that he develop any portion of the property for retail purposes.
Alright, so that we, we have an interest in it getting developed for retail purposes under our contract? And, and that, those are his plans? Those are the restaurants?
He's seeking a partner of one of his two, two retail restaurants.
Yeah, that, that will be fine. There may be some questions here from the council, so...
Yes, sir. The plans have already been submitted and the permit application for a dual-purpose building, not dual-purpose, dual-occupant building, rather, for a barbecue concept, Rodney Scott's and Little Donkey, which is a Mexican concept.
Okay. Alright. Alright, thank you. So that's, that's the item before us on this excess donated property to the city. This being, requiring a first reading, we'll also have unanimous consent, so I'll entertain a motion for unanimous consent by Mr. Thames, second by Mr. Wyatt, and roll call, I'm sorry, Mr....
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Mr. Hickelbuth.
I'm sorry, can you refresh my memory exactly where this property is on 18th that we're talking about? I'm lost a little.
I'm not sure I'm the best person, but it's simply...
Any person, I don't care.
Mike's Hot Dog.
Mike's Hot Dog.
Or Mike's Hot Dog.
If we're talking, most, majority of it, 80% are restricted to, no may you consider that, but I don't think you do. But it's a city, Mike's Hot Dog.
Mr. Ford, I'm obviously telling the allocation of the original, where it's, it has a hotel.
Yes, conditioned upon, not the hotel, but the developer, conditioned upon it being developer property, which is on the tour of the front of the pool.
Justin, two great restaurants outside.
Alright.
This is a, I'm sorry, just to follow up. So this is a contractual obligation under the existing agreement we have with the developer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's approved by the legislature, adopted back in December 2018.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any further questions? We've already had a motion and a second, and we're going to have a roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. All right, so unanimous consent is approved, and that will bring the full item before the council to entertain a motion for approval. By Mrs. Smith.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gualtney. And roll call vote. Ms. Melody?
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Tames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hickenbotham?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCleskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. Wright?
Yes. So we have that item as approved, ordinance 2780, I believe.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is 150820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring property located at 1,001 Queensberry Road a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Coming to us from Scott Cook, code enforcement with our police department. This public hearing will be set for September 14 at 6:00 p.m. 160820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 602 Shades Creek Parkway a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. All also coming to us from Scott Cook with our code enforcement police department. And to be set September 14 at 6:00 p.m. 170820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at Shades Creek Parkway a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750. Let me double check that.
I think that's adjacent to 602. I think they're two lots side by side.
Yeah, they said that they have, they don't have different addresses, but different parcel ID numbers is what Mr. Cook.
All right, let me just mention that as we least stated. Parcel ID number for the one I just announced, which is apparently adjacent to 602 Shades Creek Parkway. I don't have a number on this one, but it's parcel ID number 28-00-17-2-017-008.001. Again, this coming to us from Scott Cook with our code enforcement with our police department. Also set for public hearing on September 14. Next item, 180820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 1125 Hardwick Lane a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Also coming to us from Mr. Cook with our code enforcement police department. And that will be set for public hearing on September 14 at 6:00 p.m. 190820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 28 Edgill Road a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Also coming to us from Mr. Cook with our police department code enforcement. And also set for public hearing on September 14 at 6:00 p.m. And lastly, 200820, Request for consideration to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 307 West Glenwood Drive a public nuisance due to violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth. Again, coming to us from Scott Cook with our code enforcement with our police department. And that will be set for public hearing on September 14 at 6:00 p.m. And just to give everybody a little heads up.
I was just saying, if they want to know why we did so many at one time.
Yeah, well, six is better than 14, okay?
That's how much she went on the agenda, yeah.
So, which is not a good thing for our city in that we have a lot of properties that are presently the subject of public nuisance issues. So nonetheless, those are the six set for public hearing for September 14.
With more to come.
More to come. 210820 is our next item, Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of August 11, 2020 through August 31, 2020. And this is our vouchers from Mr. Burghat, our finance director, assistant city clerk, and Ms. Salter, our city clerk, assistant finance director.
Oh, Mr. Tames?
Last one?
Happy Sunday to you.
Yep. Turn it over to you, sir.
I found no issues and would recommend paying the vouchers.
All right, so that's a good report on the vouchers through August 31, 2020. I'll accept that as a motion for approval. Second by Mr. Hickenbotham. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, so those vouchers stand approved through August 31, 2020. We still have a few other items before I get to the budget here. Next, one other item, 250820, which is a resolution authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Jefferson County for infrastructure projects along Green Springs Highway. And this is coming from, I guess it's going to be coming from me. And Mr. Kendrick, I'll let you inform the council what this one is about.
Yes, Ms. Smith and Ms. Andrews.
I'm sorry, this is coming from, yeah, let me clarify. This is that item.
This essentially is a.
Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andrews items.
This is a grant from Jefferson County to the city to provide, without additional obligations, $10,000 for it to be used to construct sidewalks on Green Springs. And what the resolution does is authorize the mayor to sign the community infrastructure agreement that the county sent me at 5:00.
Okay, that's for basically $10,000 grant. And thank you, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andrews. And Mrs. Smith, please.
And I would like to thank Commissioner Emmons because he is the one who has shepherded us through and made sure that we've got the money. So thanks to him for that.
This is being promoted by Commissioner Emmons also.
Yes, anytime your county commissioner picks the phone up and says, hey, I've got some money. Find me a project. You make it happen. So thank you, Councilor Smith, too.
Well, I'm glad we were able to take advantage of it. All right, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
By Mr. Gualtney. Second by Ms. Andrews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And Mike, will that be a resolution?
Yes, it's a resolution authorized the mayor sign.
It's 115.
What did you say?
115.
2115.
Gotcha. All right, all right. That will bring us to our last item on our agenda, 220820, which is the presentation of the mayor's fiscal year 2020, 2021 proposed budgets for general capital debt service and special revenue funds. I'll turn it over to Mayor McBrayer. Sir?
All right, so Brian, are we up on this? All right, good. All right, well, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Harden. Thanks for letting me steal your microphone for just a second. I guess the first question is long version or short version?
Bring it on, come on.
Extra short?
Extra short. President Wright's going with option C. Extra short. All right, good. All right, so I want to start off by simply saying congratulations to those of you who were re-elected. Congratulations to those of you who are in the runoff. I know y'all all represent our city very well, and we're proud of you. And I have to say that this is probably the most relaxed budget presentation that I will possibly give. So if y'all bear with me through this, but it's probably one of the most important things that the mayor does, is present a budget to his council because it really sets the tone for the upcoming year. And it's especially important for me, well, it's important every year, but it's especially important this year that we continue to work right through October, do everything that we're supposed to do to provide this next council a great budget. Just like we've had the opportunity to work with, we owe it to them to put that same amount of work and effort into this budget. We, I'm very happy that, I'm pleased that we'll announce 12 years in a row with surpluses. My goal with this budget that I'm going to present tonight is to put the next mayor and the next council in a position to finish with a surplus if it's important to them. So I feel like if I can do that, I get to go to sleep at night and I get to enjoy fishing. So with that being said, we'll get started. And I'll just say too, and everyone in the room knows that Robert and Melody, they work so hard putting this all together for me. They make it very simple, and I appreciate all that they do. The amount of hours that goes into this is pretty incredible. But they do a great job. So starting with, I guess y'all can see it up here. At the conclusion of the meeting tonight, we'll pass this out to everyone so you can take it home because I know Chairman Jones, you've already eagerly scheduled these finance meetings, so that'll be good. All right, so on the first slide, I am not going to sit and read through all of this, but this is just a general overview. All of our equity, you can read for yourself, but basically 85.6 million. That includes our debt service, capital, general fund, unassigned and assigned, special revenues, and our operating results. This, of course, goes back to 2015. And if you take a moment and read the notes, the numbers that you see in bold, so the 609,000, if you read the notes and add them together, you're, we would have technically had about a $1.9 million surplus with that. The number looks a little low because that number remains after our transferring money out for bonuses to the employees. And it also remains after we transferred, in some cases, well, basically a range of anywhere from half million up to a million each year into the capital projects fund. So that's our operating results there. Our cash balance on hand, long list of those, but cash on hand as of June 30, 62.8 million. That keeps Mr. Bishop awake at night counting. Continuation there. Four and five cent. Capital projects, debt service, of course, being a big one. Rainy day funds on there, 17.3 million. So again, and I do this every year, but payroll's budgeted with our merit increases of just north of 345,000. New required pension rates and an estimated 5% increase in our insurance premiums with the city paying 100% of the health insurance increase, which would be a cost to the city of $126,970. The budget does not include a COLA. And I want to take just a second to talk about that. I am, I'm certainly not opposed to a COLA, but a COLA would be about $267,000 if you did a 1% COLA. But I didn't put it in there because like I've done for the previous 12 times, I don't put things in and then put you in a position to take it out, okay? The 267,000, here's how I view this, and I think the employees will understand, especially when you read some articles about what some of our other sister cities around are going through in cases where people are taking pay cuts, there's furloughs, laying employees off. The City of Homewood's not talking about any of that. But I do think it would be smart for us to hold that COLA until we can see a little more of what's going to happen with the economy and the COVID. We're coming back. But again, I just think it's much easier to have the conversation of let's be thankful we've got a job than it is opposed to having to come in six months later and say there's not enough to pay you. That's my recommendation. We can discuss it in finance meetings, budget meetings. I'm open to it, but I just think it's important that the next group understands kind of what's in front of you here. Again, my budget doesn't this year, nor has it ever included or have money allocated for an annual bonus. That bonus has always been stipulated by us having a surplus. I think that needs to continue that way, but again, that'll be the next group's decision. But I am absolutely in favor of a bonus. I think the smallest amount we've probably paid is 350, maybe 325, but up to 375,000 for employee bonuses. And then due to the city reaching our goal on employee wellness screens, the city's received our best rating of preferred on health insurance. But if the city loses our preferred health rate and it goes to a standard, it's going to cost our city about $330,000 a year. So this evening, I think we saw an item on the agenda where I'm going to ask y'all to consider a stipend to retirees that I think will give us a lot greater cushion on making sure that our retirees have a really nice incentive to stay on our city's health insurance plan. It's a win for them, it's a win for us financially speaking. And then, of course, it says there at the bottom, maintaining that 5% retirees of the city's insurance is required for us to maintain the preferred rates. But we can talk more about that also. General fund budget, budgeted revenues, 53.5 million. Expenditures, 56.9 million. Other resources and reduction of fund balance is how we'll balance that with 3.3. Mr. Jones, take a breath. It's going to be okay. When we get into the budget hearings, we'll have a couple of options for the council to consider that I think it'll make it very simple. I don't think that those other resources will have to be used. But to make it a legal presentation and a legal budget, we have to balance it. But we'll just have to wait and see how you want to handle a couple of things going forward as to how we handle that number there. Thank you, Brandon. Here's our capital projects. Same here, 7.1 in revenues. We'll discuss some funding options and that. And that number may come down some more too, as JJ and I have a meeting with Mr. Cooper later on this week, so we'll see. There's just some other things that's going to happen that might adjust just a little bit. Capital project highlights for the upcoming year for basically our Lake Shore Diamond Interchange, 18th Street renovation, our Green Springs renovation, and the Samford Park at Pocket Park. Pocket Park? Easy for you to say. Now I can't say Park at Pock. Pocket Park. All of our funds, here's a budget summary of it. Again, not going to go into all that detail there, but roughly 86.7 million for that. Board of Education Fund, Fund Six, our property taxes, pretty incredible. 9.8 million. And general fund, 8.8 million. So our total to the Homewood Board of Education, they ought to be really happy with that if we attain our goal of 18,721,000 dollars. And they're worth every penny of it. So again, in conclusion, we'll get the budgets out to you. Chairman's already sent out an email saying when the budgets will take place, and.
I gotta post them tomorrow, too, and I'll send them out to everybody. I haven't posted them yet.
Okay. All right, well, that's good, so.
I'm in denial that they're fixing to start.
I know you. I'll get the invite about 11 tonight. Good. Mr. President, council, my pleasure to present the budget to you. I think it's a budget that we can all be proud of, proud to be associated with you. Thank you for your hard work. Look forward to meeting with you in the budget meetings. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always a pleasure to receive those budgets, and I think that's number 10 I've received. And every one of them have been, we're just a lucky community, we really are from a financial perspective. All right, so with that, without objection, we'll send the mayor's budget to finance committee for Mr. Jones to set budget hearings, which I think he's already scheduled. So, and that will bring us frankly to the end of our agenda tonight and up to announcements. And Mayor, we do get to turn back over to you for any announcements tonight. All right, thank you, sir. And that'll get us over to Mr. Gualtney.
Well, let's see. First and foremost, let's set public works. Councilor Jones, how long do you need?
We got counsel that night, too.
Yeah. You're going to do 4:00 to 4:30? Looking at mine, I would do 4:30 to 4:15. I'm sorry, 4:30 to 4:45.
You're going to go back?
I'm going to make it.
I like it. That would be impressive.
4:30 to 4:45, 15 minutes.
But finance is at 4?
4:00 to 4:30, yes.
Thanks.
All right, is that it, Mr. Gualtney?
That is it.
All right, Mr. Tames?
P and D, 4:45, five blocks, please.
Okay.
You got that one rezoned.
Is that it for you? Mr. Hickenbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking forward to the budget hearing. Always an exciting and fun time. I do need to clarify something. I'll use this as an opportunity. Am I the next, do I, I'm doing the invoices, starting this next session on it. I just couldn't avoid it, could I? I was just going to rotate off. You gotta make me, I tried to leave, he's dragging me back in.
See, how do we get on? Because I thought it was July, August at 10.
This means you got to do it for three months, so you got to do it for December, too, so.
All right. If you're willing to take my recommendations after I leave the council, I'll be willing to give them. I did want to just extend a word of, I guess, thanks is the best way to put it, to everyone who did offer themselves for service in the election and those who are still going to be working hard until October 6. It's hard to run for office, takes a lot of time and energy. It's rough on the candidate, it is a difficult thing for their families, and it's. thing for their families, and it's also difficult to serve. So, just want to thank everybody who did that, both the folks sitting up here with me and the new folks. I see a number of our new folks sitting in the corner over there together. And so, I do want to thank everybody for their time and energy in that respect. And like I said, just getting ready for budget hearings for the last time. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr....
I'm glad you get as excited as I do. I thought I was the only one. Nobody else. This is a feast.
Y'all enjoy that process. Mr. Walberton?
Yes, sir. I wanted to kind of extend similar feelings and sentiments to everybody that's here and present, that has either won election or is still vying for election back in the back. And I wanted to thank everybody that, quite frankly, that's been open to talking, whether it's over the phone or knocking on doors. I think this time's given us some good feedback and some good positive ideas about things that we can do to improve the city further and particularly my ward, and I've heard that from some people. So, anyway, I agree. It's a big commitment, and I'm thankful that other people are willing to step out and take it on as well. Really, outside of that, I just wanted to wish my daughter a happy birthday about a week early, since we won't have a meeting next week, which she'll turn nine on the 7th. So, that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Walberton, and Mr. McCloskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will do public safety. Britt, you said 15 minutes?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do public safety from 5:00 to 5:15. And I will also give my thanks for everybody that's been going through this campaign. Some of you were done weeks ago. Some of us still have weeks to go. But we do know that it's a difficult time, but it's something that I think for the betterment of the city and to see how many people put their name in the hat this time was something really special, to see as many people that care about this city has really, you know, it's a great day. So, I think that's all I know.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I wanted to thank the mayor for your presentation tonight. It looks to be a good budget. We're going to work through. We're going to start meeting on September 8, so we're going to have a multitude of meetings like we always do. And I'm looking forward to working with the Finance Committee. I want to thank Robert and Melody for all the overtime that they've been working through with the budget, and especially we've got election, handling the election. I don't know that there's been a busier time for a municipality than right now. And you've handled it very well, and I appreciate that. And Finance will be at 4. And then I do want to say one other quick thing, and that is, there are a lot of cities that probably are getting a presentation tonight that are not look, that don't look good. We are in good financial shape. We're going to have a surplus. Could we do better? Yes, we can always do better. But I'm proud of kind of where we are as a city in light of where we are in the world right now. I feel like we're in a good, good position to recover quickly. And I want to thank everyone who continues to support Homewood. But I'm excited about what you presented, and you know, it's a good starting point for us to continue our excellence on the financial side. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mrs. Smith?
Yes, I'll set special issues for 5:15, and maybe we'll get a little break before we start council at 6. I just want to echo what Walter said. Thank you, Mayor McBrayer, for presenting a good budget, and it's going to be interesting for us to get to go through that this time. It'll be kind of a different, a different context this year. And I would like to also say to Melody and Robert and their staffs, I don't know how y'all did what you did. I can only imagine you didn't sleep, or eat, or go home to your homes and see your families, but it is so appreciated. And I don't want y'all to think that we don't notice that. It's amazing how y'all managed to work through the biggest election in the city of Homewood's history at the same time as you were trying to put together a budget. That's a lot. So, we are very appreciative of all y'all's hard work.
Well, I want to, thank you. And I know Robert's still standing, but I had to tell a funny to make it light because you're going to make me cry. But I actually was cutting my grass last night with my little 40-volt lawnmower with my cellphone battery light on because I was going to get written up on my HOA. So, I had my cellphone light. I was cutting grass.
Oh, gosh.
Tom, just tell me, and I'll send my 17-year-old son over to do that for you.
Just lighten the mood a little bit. Thank you.
And Mary, she also got an MBA during all that, too.
Yeah, also completing her MBA program. Let's not forget about that.
Thank you. We're going to work these people into the ground, so hang in there. Mr. Wyatt?
I'd just echo what everyone else said. Thank you, Mayor, for this presentation and the presentations for my six years up here. As good as always. You've always presented a good budget, and I'm sure this one will be as well. And Melody and Robert, thank y'all. Melody left out part of that story where she was, it was so dark, she was figuring out which grass she had cut by, because she was doing it barefoot, to figure out which grass was cut and not, which scares me to death, by the way, but I'm glad all of your toes are here tonight.
Well, it's a 40-volt battery, you know. I had to have a little humor just because Miss Smith was going to make me tear up being so nice.
Thank you all both for all that you have done. We appreciate it. We know how busy you have been, and just know it's very appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. Ms. Andrus?
Well, I want to say, Brandon, thank you for the AEDs on the Lake Shore Trail. Sid Warren, high school junior, goes to school with a lot of our kids. Anyway, he earned his Eagle Scout by putting together stands for the AEDs. So, there's three on the Lake Shore Trail now. There's one just as you get in with the trail from the target side. There's one close to the high school bridge, and then there's one down at the Green Springs end. I wanted to thank the residents on Saturday afternoon. Mr. McCloskey, Mr. Wyatt, and I met with several homeowners in the Salter and Windsor Boulevard area, and Sanford University also attended. We really had a fantastic meeting and got something concrete where we're going to be able to meet quarterly with Sanford and the residents, which is nothing done before. So, I'm very excited about what we accomplished on that Saturday afternoon. And also, I wanted to let you all know that in September, we're going to start meeting again with our council roundtable. So, we're going to start with a virtual meeting. So, I'll get everybody that information. But we are looking to formalize the arrangement, which I think I'll talk to you guys about, and invite everybody, of course, in Jefferson County to participate. And we'll be talking about that at that meeting in September. So, I want to make sure everyone's included on that. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus and Mr. Harden?
We do know how hard Robert and Melody works. We are appreciative of that. It's happened here. I'm also grateful, you know, the mayor presents the budget. We've got, we're doing great with Sid. Some folks don't always believe that, and I'm here. We're really doing great. Thank you, Mayor. To the council, fast, the council for the amount of money we've been able to save and how well we've been doing on our budget. Certainly the process of doing, we all have done the last few weeks. We meet a lot of folks and enjoy those meetings, and you learn a lot about their concerns about the city. And hopefully we'll be able to help them with those concerns going forward. But it is nice to be on the other side of the last two.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I'll just say, just a couple of quick comments. Wow, what an election it was, ladies and gentlemen. What a turnout, number of candidates, incredibly exciting. The more people the vote, the better. We are office of the city. And so, I was very pleased to see a large turnout and pleased to see all the candidates. Really, you do need to be commended because it does take a lot. We've all been through it. Some in the audience have been through it, of stepping, putting your name on the line. It is a hard thing to do and putting it out there to serve your community. And we're a lucky community to have such involvement in people to want to serve, and then to have such a strong public vote in our election. So, it really was exciting and very encouraging. And congratulations to those who won and those who didn't, but by golly, who did participate and stepped forward. You do to be commended. Mayor, thank you for the budget. I really will miss those budgets. I'll go fishing with you, though, real soon. But I'm very grateful from the very first one I sat through. And Melody and Robert, I know you guys and how much credit y'all get for the whole process, but I really appreciate the mayor keeping it as a high priority. It's always been a high priority for you, and I'm grateful for that. And from the very first one we did so many years ago, and to go through them all, from what Walter can probably attest to what was going on many, many years ago under different administrations, it was not a pretty sight. And the proof is in the pudding. It is not window dressing that our city is doing economically well. And I don't want to overstate it because I don't want to, you know, because we are in a pandemic, and I know that a lot of people are suffering. But that is one thing we don't have a, I'll say, you know, a problem with is a, you know, a city that's not economically strong. We are, and we have maintained incredible fortitude through this pandemic, and it's not window dressing. Doesn't mean we can't do things better or whatever. I don't mean to, it's not even political. I'm just saying this community in this town, we have a strong fiscal position. And I'm personally grateful just to be a resident. And Mayor, I think you have a lot to do with that in handling our budgets and going forward. And same to you, Mr. Jones, in handling the Finance Committee, and I know you've got one more task ahead of you in the coming months. And I'm really excited also about these bond opportunities, which we're going to keep our eyes on. That will help the budget. My goodness, it really could. And I hesitate to have read the positive numbers on those bond opportunities, but that is what we have, the information that's been provided to us, and let's keep our fingers crossed that we can take advantage of those and help our budget process even better. So, enough comments. I'm glad we live in an economically strong city and look forward to our runoff elections and new office holders to make it even stronger going forward. So, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.